Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and bring this call, this meeting to order. And at this time, Mr. Tucker Green, would you mind doing the prayer for tonight, please?
Glad to be here. Bow your head, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We ask that you be with us as we go forward tonight and into the days ahead. Give our leaders wisdom and guidance. See us through. We ask that you look after our men and women in public safety, men and women serving the United States military. Look after them. Be with us again as we go forward. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. And while we're saying... Jerry Walker.
He has the lead.
Mr. Yurkin, would you please do the valedictus for us, please?
Valedictus to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see. All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda other than we would like to add the vendor's contract under action items, item one of the vendor's contract, as I believe that's the Coca-Cola, Pepsi vendor group. We'd like to add that. Only amendment to the agenda, please. Our end executive session, I'm sorry, we do have an executive session, so we'll have to end. We have two. We want to add the vendor contracts under action items, item I, and we will, we have an executive session. Yeah, it'll be, the executive session will be coming after a guest, we'll go ahead and do the comments and everything before we go into executive session, or if anybody has anything they need to, need to tell us. Need a move in a second to approve.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that there was nobody saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Bring this... All right, then, okay, that brings us down to item number five, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a move in a second to approve the agenda then?
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second to approve the agenda for tonight? Any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. The propeller's is still not here.
Yeah, there you are.
Oh, there you are, Dan. I was expecting, I was expecting the young lady, and you don't look like a young lady, but that's fine.
He's definitely fifteen, but I...
No, okay. Appreciate you being here. All right, now, at this time, we have item number six under employee recognition. This is an item that Ms. Diddy had started here a few years ago, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Diddy.
Well, we do have one of our good long-term employees to honor, but I'm not sure he's here.
He's not here.
It's Jeff Flathers, ten years of service in Public Works Department. So we can give this to him next week.
All right, that'll be, that'll be fine. We'll get up to the next meeting, we'll postpone that. All right, that brings us down to item number seven, under the consent agenda. We signed the National Foster Care Proclamation. We have done that under consent agenda for May of 2018. So we have done that, and that is going to be on the website. Let's take care of that. That brings us down to old business. Under old business, we've done the contracts and all for, for the L-MIG for this year, for road paving bins. We had had four, five, we had five companies that have turned in bins. Blount Construction, $2,002,548,182. Johnson Paving, $1,896,922. Northwest Paving, $2,244,116.80. Caldwell Construction at $2,395,015. And then also C.W. Matthews at $2,896,03. Mr. Nicholson has, has received these, and he has reviewed them. And at this time, we couldn't find anything detrimental, any other than Johnson Paving was the little bidder at one point, or $1,896,922.50. Where's Johnny at? There he is. Do you have any other things to add to that?
No, we looked over all the contracts, and what they did on them, they were all the same.
Okay, so this is the L-MIG that the DOP State has given us money for, for this year, for road paving. If it's in favor with you two, I need a move in a second to approve for Johnson Paving, I need to approve that contract.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second for Johnson Paving to pay this year. All that, all that, excuse me, any further discussion? All that in favor of nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Mr. Nicholson, you can inform Johnson Paving, we'll go ahead, their contract has been delivered. All right. That brings us down under new business, under item number nine, the Pickens County UGA Cooperative Extension Contract. This is the contract we've been introduced to Christina back here, that's going to be the county extension date for Pickens County. This is their contract. You've got, you had a copy of that for at least two weeks when the agenda was set. Y'all have any questions on this to approve the contract for the new 4-H-A? All right. I need a move in a second to approve.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. 4-H contract has been approved, congratulations, good to have you on board.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us down to item B, North George Community Action Agency, the MATS contract. These are the same contracts we've been doing for many years. North George Community Agency, those white buses you see running around Pickens County. They are governed by Mr. Jonathan Ray that represents Pickens County. He also represents the whole district, which is, I believe, is about 18 counties in the area. This is the renewal of the contract for the coming year. A lot of the money here for these contracts is fed money, federal money. So we need a, it's the same contract, no changes. And I don't think we've had any, had an increase, did we, Ms. Fay? I don't think there was. So that being said, I need a move in a second to approve the, the contracts for North George Community Agency and the MATS buses contract.
I think there is a $4,000 capital increase.
That one?
But we can put that into our, they're on the fiscal year of July to June, so it can add to our fiscal budget next year.
Okay. All right. Any further questions before we go forward? Need a move in a second to approve?
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. Now that brings us down to item number 10, under the financial report. Ms. Harpy, I'm going to turn it over to you, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry if you can't see this on screen, but it is, it is online on our website and on the... The financial report that y'all have is for the period ending April 30th, and that's four months of our fiscal year. So the expenditure budget should be 33% or less. The general fund revenue collections through April 30th total $4,265,836, and that's 16.38% of the total revenue budget. General government functions, the total expenditures are $1,059,670, and that's 27.34%. For the judicial functions, their expenditures total $982,172, and that's 28.56%. For public safety, their total expenditures are $4,295,36, and that's 32.31%. For public works, the expenditures are $1,027,82, and that's 34.36%. For the Health Department Senior Center and the MATS program, expenditures are $162,002, and that's 20.04%. For culture and recreation, expenditures are $321,288, and that's 33.07%. For housing and development, the expenditures are $207,714, and that's 31.52%. Total general fund expenditures through that period are $8,54,963, and that's 30.94%. So overall, we're slightly over 2% under the expected budget. For the enterprise funds, the Water Department, their expenditures are $446,628, and that's 20.83%. And for the airport, $107,153, and that's 24.3% of their budget. The line item budget reports went out to the Department of Hands and All Active Officials earlier this week, and I have copies of those if you all would like to see them.
What is this line item here that's a 59% probation, is there any reason that's...
The 59%? Yes, that is, that's partially grant funded through the Act, the probation grant, and that's why it's a little bit over. It should come back into, it should come back into budget. Also, if you look at the roads and the shops, the other roads, they're at 36%, but they had a large capital item that they've already purchased, it was almost $200,000. So that will skew their budget for, for months. Any other questions? It's good, thank you.
Please, just a second.
There was also just a, another attachment in your report, and it's a request for the minimum of the general fund budget for, it increases the revenue and expenditure budgets by $8,595, and that's to recognize revenue that the Fire Department received for a trauma care grant, and that grant money was used to purchase supplies for the ambulances. So this budget minimum will actually recognize the revenue amount in the budget, and it increases his medical supplies line in this budget. So it doesn't increase, it increases the overall amount of the budget, but it's revenue and expenditure. Is that approval over?
All right, any further questions from Ms. Harpy at this time? All right. Thank you, Ms. Fay, appreciate that. Under item 11, we have the, we need to approve the minutes. We're going to start on item number one, the regular board meeting on April 19th, 2018. Y'all have had a copy of the board minutes that's in your package. I need a move in a second on this to approve. Do y'all see any deletions, admissions, or anything like that that we need to do on a particular group of minutes? I didn't see anything early when I read through it. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, those minutes have been approved. Then we had a work session on May 3rd, 2018. I have also, I've kind of skimmed through it, didn't find any, any items in there that we need to, that I think we need to correct. Y'all see anything that needs to be done as we go forward now? All right, need a move in a second to approve? Have another move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Approved. And we had a call meeting on May the 3rd, 2018, in Suite 168. The call meeting, of course, if you remember, was in regard to the airport and the T-hangers thereof. Didn't see anything abnormal, any, did y'all see anything, and if not, any move in a second to approve?
To a move in a second.
Move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number B, on a rezon request. Mr. Wallace Gibson was asking for a rezon request on 258 Alley's Way, Jasper, Georgia, 3143, request rezon 8.89 acres from Ag to Rural Residential to be split out on tax map parcel 039-025. This particular parcel is, of course, the paperwork is in your, in your portfolio. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received an application from March 20th, 2018 from Wallace Gibson, requesting a change in the land use district from agriculture to rural residential on a partial split from 8.89 acres out of a 23.62 acre tract located on Alley's Way off Gibson Trail in Jasper, Georgia, which is out on the other side of Hill City. The intent purpose of this rezon request, if approved, would be to allow Mr. Gibson to sell to a prospective buyer. A public hearing was held on May 14th, 2018 regarding this application to the Pickens County Commissioner Committee Room over the Pickens County Planning Commission. After receiving, after reviewing, I'm sorry, the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and no additional information from the applicant with no public comments, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted seven yes and zero no to recommend approval for the rezon request on the 8.89 acre partial split from tax map parcel number 039-025. The Pickens County Course Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for review and decision. What is your... Move accepted. That move?
He said cousin, stop. I didn't feel like to say thing on.
Okay, have a move in a second. Any further discussion? Are you the first, is he the first cousin?
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll vote to approve. Any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That has been approved, Richard, wherever Richard's at.
Thank you, yes, sir.
All right. Now that brings us down to the comprehensive plan that has been worked on diligently for quite a few months. Richard, you want to give us a quick overview of the comprehensive plan with no major changes? I didn't see in the last, on the last draft, is there anything we need to know before we go forward? I didn't see anything, anything different.
No, sir, we just added a note for sure to note that any renovations to the old Jasper Middle School, specific to public safety training, at this time, it's, it's, my understanding is staff, and so based on statements, it was put into the document that the work would be done at no cost to taxpayers for the public safety training portion.
All right, and I see on the, on the form for certification, City of Jasper, Nelson, and Talking Rock have already signed up on it through their meetings, so I need the board approval to accept the, the comprehensive plan for Pickens County as we go forward. Have a move, do I get a second?
Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussions? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Comprehensive plan has been approved. All right, now that brings us down to item number D, under service delivery strategy. Richard, I'm going to revert back to you again.
Thank you. The only two major changes, we know that Nelson disbanded formally their police department in January, so that's noted on the service delivery strategy, which is just an update showing what all the cities and the county, what services we provide. We also noted that formally in April, Talking Rock dissolved the intergovernmental agreement that Talking Rock had with the county, where since 2011, the county had been issuing permits, doing inspections, issuing licenses on behalf of Talking Rock. The mayor and city council unanimously voted in April to dissolve that agreement, and that's fine, it's noted in your, on this document.
All right, you need a move in a second to approve through the board here.
Thank you.
What you see. You heard what, what we have. I need a move in a second to approve those, those changes in those particular areas. Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That brings us down to item D, under mutual water purchase agreement between Gilmer and Pickens County. This is a, to give you a reader's digest version, you've had a copy of this, we have a, it's an agreement between Pickens County and Gilmer County Water Sewer. As you know, we've been building a eight-inch main all the way to the Gilmer County line of Bucon Road. They are wanting to either sell us water, or we are wanting to either sell them water. It's a mutual aid agreement. If we buy water from them, it's a dollar and seventy, dollar and seventy-four cents a thousand, I believe that was the quote, and if we buy water from them, it's a seventy, it's a rebirth, it goes both ways. Mainly for the, for an item in case of emergency situation in those areas across that mountain ridge, so we can push water or receive water both ways with Gilmer County. So there is the contract, we have read it, the attorney has tweaked it in, and I think you've all had a copy on it. They haven't, they have to have the contract in order for they, in order for them to borrow money through GFA, they have to have a contract with neighboring counties. They are not, at this time, Gilmer County is not connected to any county around them. We're fortunate, we've got, we've got numerous lines to every corner of the county, such as Gordon County, Cherokee County, we've got two lines ready to connect on to Dawson County, and then we, this will be the second line we've got ready up there to Gilmer. EPD, of course, is pushing the, pushing the process through the fact that we interconnect between counties and for safety reasons and for the, for the communities thereof. So that's what this contract is, is about, it's just a mutual aid, mutual water purchase agreement between Gilmer, Pickens County, where they can go ahead and get their GFA loan started, and start their process from the school system up around Clear Creek, all the way down to Gilmer County line. So I need a move in a second, if y'all will, to give me the authority to sign this contract, and then they can go ahead and proceed with their project.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Excuse me. All right. Now brings us down to item F. Item F is a, is a project that we've been, all been working on for quite a few years. Want to thank the Grand View LLC group for being here this evening on its agreement for the sale of water rights with Grand View Lake Company and their repair of the dam. There again, it's, it's a contract that we have been working on, just been working on, and it has been, been tweaked in. We would like, Pickens County are, I would like to go ahead and get this, this contract approved because Grand View LLC is having a yearly board meeting, and it is this Saturday. So if this... Stockholders' meeting. So if this agreement is approved, we will sign off on our part, then, then these two gentlemen will take the contract with them and see what their board wants to do, that we can proceed on with the project, which is, of course, is the dam repair, as well as a water withdrawal permit of 333,000 gallons a day, along with a water treatment plant with, with property being donated from a certain entity up there, water tank, and then major lines, so that'll give Pickens County a reservoir, plus the ability to pump 333 gallons a day out of Grand View Lake. So that's what this is all about, and we've been talking about it for two years. So I need a move in a second to give me the authority to sign this contract.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you very much. Peter, if you will, I'll sign this contract this evening, and the clerk will then make you a copy to take to your group, and thank you very much, it's been hard work trying to make this happen. Citizens of Pickens County have been wanting a reservoir for many years, and I think this is the answer to a prayer with the least amount of dollars that they can spend, because as we all know, it costs you about $4.50 a gallon to build a reservoir with a 12 million gallon minimum. So you probably made your bucks if we'd had to build one, and then finding the property to build would be nothing. So thank you very much, and send my thanks to Grand View. That brings us down to item number H, the appointment of the library trustees, and if I can, can I have all four of these at one vote? Some appointments have come up for renewal, and also we have one or two new people on the, on the library board. If I may, do them all in one group?
You could get G, I think you said G.
Good.
The reciprocal easement agreement.
Oh, I missed one?
Yes, yes.
Oh, the reciprocal easement agreement, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You are correct. I'm sorry, thank you. Agreement for the sale of water rights. I had forgotten about that one. That's on the backside. Yes. Yeah. But this is, this is an easement for the water lines that we'll be bringing out of the Grand View area, giving us the easement rights to tie them, either tie them to the city, or take the lines around and tie them up to Bent Tree, and go around that, that area up in there. So I need a move in a second to approve the reciprocal easement agreement between, between Pickens County and Grand View Lake County.
Sure.
Have a move in a second. Thank you very much, I appreciate y'all correcting me on that. Any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And I'm assuming you want to take that contract also?
Yes.
Okay. All right, y'all ready? All right, now that brings us down to items H, item H, the appointment of library trustees. We have four individuals to sit on the library board for the, for the coming term. Number one is Winship Durip. Number two is Lee Ann Spivey. Number three is Susan White. And number four is Nancy Hammer. I'd like to have a move in a second to approve these four individuals to sit on the library board for Pickens County.
Sure.
Have a move in a second, any further discussion? None being let, none being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right. And then that brings us down to, to the amendment to the number I of vendor contracts. We've got two, two contracts here, or two proposals, one from Pepsi, one from Coca-Cola for the, for the vendor contracts for the Recreation Department courthouse, and this particular building here for the supply of Coca-Cola's or in annual Pepsi's and the equipment thereof. We have reviewed this, the Recreation Department has reviewed it, and all intents and purposes, we're already with Pepsi, but that has nothing to do with this right here, but Pepsi has offered a lucrative deal to stay with Pepsi. I know they've... You don't have stock, do you? The, Pepsi did do a good, Coca-Cola did do a good job for, for scoreboards and all, but Pepsi has, has issued X amount of dollars to the Recreation Department, to scoreboards, if they want to do scoreboard, but they're, but they're having the ability to spend the money in other areas if so needed. So at that time, with the recommendation of, of the Rec Center and a few others, their recommendation is to stay with, with Pepsi at this time. So if that be y'all's likeness, I would like a move in a second to proceed.
To a move in a second.
Have a move in a second to stay with Pepsi. Any further discussion? None being all that everybody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. All right, Pepsi, that, of next year. All right. Now that brings us down to item number 11, under the comments. We have got to go into executive session, but before we go into executive session, because sometimes executive session takes quite a while, if we have anybody here that have any comments, questions, I'd like to go ahead and get them out of the way before we go into executive, because I'm sure y'all want to wait another hour or so.
Thank you, sir.
Introduce yourself, and please.
I'm Paul Horton. I want to get an issue we have in our subdivision, and I spoke with Mr. Jerry Barnes, our representative, our commissioner area. I purchased our home, the Zack, on this day, one year ago, in Bethany more subdivision, not, not knowing until six months after that our roads were, we have no HOA, we have no road maintenance agreement, and a private road with over 145 homes in our subdivision. And our, my...
And our, my, one of my big concerns is the access of those roads with no maintenance for public safety vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, with the deterioration. You know, some of those homes are on back there, you know, and it, and our insurance, you know, that could be an issue there if they become so hard to pass with the fire trucks and ambulances. I was, I want to ask y'all for your help in figuring that out, because I would love to stay in Pickens and stay in Bethany Mores, and many others are here too, that know the cause, and I did a petition, you know, asking y'all to take over those roads, and we'd like to be put on the agenda in the future.
Sure, we would be glad if you want to get on the agenda. We've got a work session coming up in two weeks that will give Ms. Lisa a call at two-five-three-eight-eight-seventeen.
Okay.
She can go and get you on the work session agenda, that way we can back questions and answers back and forth, give you all some guidelines of what we can do and what we can't do for the future, and give some sort of direction to the subdivision thereof. This is not a new subject, we have, we have talked about this back in two thousand and eight, and the attorney that's sitting next to me has, has delved many weeks into seeing if there's some way we could, we could help out. Matter of fact, we went ahead at that time and did core samples on those roads.
Yeah, and I have those, and it shows that they weren't, they're not good roads. That's, that's further to my deterioration of how quick is, they're not good roads.
That's correct. We have, we have partnered, I was being quite frank, we have partnered with other subdivisions that had privately on road, of course, they put some skin in the game.
Yeah, I wish we had the funds in place way there.
But there's, there's ways to do it, and we'd be glad to sit down if y'all want to get on the agenda for the work session, which is at ten-thirty next, or two weeks from today, is it ten or ten-thirty?
Ten.
Ten. If you want to come to work session, it's a little more informal to that point, if you've got time, or we can, if you want to sit down with me and we can get the attorney in there, you want to meet one-on-one, we'll, we'd like to work with you any way you want to, we'll give you some ideas, we'll bat it around, see what we can do.
Yeah, it'd be great to have as many from the community put in too, because I've only been there a year, some of them have been there since they built in oh, end of oh-four, oh-five.
Yeah, there is other items involved in that that we would like to share with you as we go forward. Granted, you have got some questions, and we have, hopefully we've got the answers. Now whether it's going to be answers you like or not, it's still yet to be determined, hopefully we can work out something and proceed, and get your dilemma taken care of, because believe me, we have.
It's not going away.
We have worked with those subdivisions, but we have got issues with ordinances that were put in place before I come on board.
Yes, sir, you're for sure Mr. William Newton's on the planet.
So, yeah, so it's interesting.
I spent many hours just trying to see, like, what happened, why, you know, why was this put up? You know, most, you know, counties wouldn't allow a that big of a subdivision to not have some kind of, where the homeowners would have a, you know, a road.
And those are good questions, we've got some answers for you.
I, I do have some folders here, you probably have most of my information, but it shows photos of the roads, and just everything that I have for, I don't, I think it rang quite enough, I don't believe.
Oh, you can get it close.
Yes, sir, that's just some of the, some of the highlights, some of the things that, you know, but definitely, yeah, the petition I have of around a hundred and forty or so signatures, I went door to door, and a few that were only there within the past year did, did know. These are private, and did, did know it, and then I talked to them, told them, you know, we're gonna work on, trying to get the county to help us on it. And I know there's a lawsuit where there's just an annex back in oh-one, and it never happened, and.
Well, they haven't been taken us until here lately, and the issue is with lawsuits, it's a, it's a lawsuit that, it's a judge ruling.
Yeah.
And it, it can be a pickle, so that's something we can discuss also as we go forward with this thing. It kind of, it's gonna be precarious on how we proceed further with this, with this item, with the, with the judge's ruling to that point. So that's what, that's what we're dealing with, a lot, some of it what we're dealing with. But we have got some other, other ramifications, or not ramifications, but we've got some other suggestions that you might want to consider as we go forward.
Yeah, we did, I, I feel the majority from talking one-on-one, majority would prefer to be in the county, in the state county, and have, you know, it is still maybe an option if the city were taking over to do city taxes, I'd be rather than aye.
I understand.
The majority would rather than aye.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
I do appreciate you get the phone, let me at you, Mr. Joe.
Well, my door's always open.
Yes, sir.
Normally, majority up here has no problem finding my door, but, but you're more than welcome, but please, give Lisa a call, and if y'all want to come one-on-one, I'll set up with the attorney and the clerk, or if y'all want to come to work session, however y'all want to work, we're here to help. Y'all think about it, get together as a group, and see how you want to do it, and we can meet in this room here, or if it's a small group, we can meet in one forty-nine, or if it's a smaller group, we can meet in office.
Do you think it would be more productive to meet just with one-on-one, or do you think a work session?
I have nothing to hide with the whole crowd here, but it's up to you, depending on how you want to do it. You got some time to think about it, but don't wait around, it needs to get you on the agenda if you want to go in front of the work session, or if you want to come to the meeting, however you want to handle it.
Oh, great, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
No problem. If Lisa, before he leaves, would you please give him your number, where he's got to contact.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments as we go forward? Before we go into executive session, I'd like to do, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind, get these two individuals a copy of the contract, because I'm sure they don't want to wait here after the executive session is over. Believe me, y'all are welcome to wait with the executive session if you'd like to, there will probably be no decision made. Yes, Robert?
Before we move away from, you know, the executive session, when I was back in Mount Holly, North Carolina, there was a similar situation with Pepsi-Cola and Coca-Cola, to where they decided to go with one or the other, and the other one went back and repossessed their scoreboards. Is that a capability here?
No.
They can't, they can't.
The Pepsi has got, give y'all a quick review, Pepsi has got it set up where they're gonna donate X amount of dollars, money, so that, that won't be, no matter what happens a year from now. Coca-Cola says that they're not gonna repossess the scoreboards that they already got the bid, but they'd like to have a, a automatic renewal contract on that one. When you start reading both contracts, Pepsi's just got a little more.
That, that's fine, I just want to make sure they're not gonna get upset, come back, take their scoreboards.
That was, that was one of the, one of the questions we looked at when we developed these, these contracts, and then the progress said they would make up any discrepancies in the funds that come forward, although we have no problem in agreeing to that.
Two youngsters out there running up.
But if, any other comments before we go forward?
I do have one more question, sir. Could I go and turn in the petition now?
Sure.
Is that just appropriate place to?
Yeah, just give it to the clerk, and she'll review it.
I know there may be time limits, I don't, you know.
Nine times out of ten, I don't, I'd be glad to see that, but, you know, my door's always open.
Okay.
You got a copy of all that?
I'll, I'll get all the copies and.
No, you have a copy of it, before you just give, that's not the only copy you've got.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Just want to be sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or suggestions? Ladies and gentlemen, Lisa, if you will, before we go into executive session, if you make these two gentlemen a copy of the, of the contract, at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna need a move, hold it, before the group here goes. Number one, we are gonna go to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon a formal employment compensation, hiring this lack or a dismissal or periodic evaluation of rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview candidates for executive positions. Number two, to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate entered to a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or enter into a, a option to purchase, dispose, or a lease real estate, gotta make these shorter, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, and number three, to consult and meet with legal counsel, about how to shorten these affidavits, to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the county, or an officer, or an employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directed and involved. I need a movement a second for us to go into executive session.
Move a second.
Have a movement a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you.